This is the regular meeting in the Mason City City Council, April 19th, 2011. It's seven o'clock and I hope the record reflects that all members are present. And is there a motion to second it, not the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Alright, those who think so say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Alright, we've got a few special items of business this evening. The first is proclamation for National Earth Day. Whereas National Earth Day is celebrating the 41st anniversary of Earth Week and this marks the 18th anniversary of the citizens of Mason City celebrating Earth Day, the community-wide cleanup effort and festival. And whereas environmental protection is a responsibility of people worldwide and Earth Day is an appropriate time to consider our role preserving our natural heritage and the precious resource that sustains us. And whereas the commitment and accomplishments of the past 41 years have been significant, but work still needs to be done to prevent environmental citizenship and citizen support for sound, workable, and effective environmental policies. Now therefore, it is resolved that I, Eric Bookmeyer, Mayor of Mason City, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2011 as Mason City's Earth Day. And Earth citizens to participate to improve our environment and contribute to Mason City's beautification efforts. And here to receive that is Renee Bartley. We'll do it in the public, we'll do it in the public input. Number two is Fair Housing Month. Whereas 2011 marks the 43rd annual celebration of the passing of Title VIII of Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Fair Housing Act. And whereas each April, the Mason City Human Rights Commission commemorates this occasion and celebrates the strides made in furthering landmark Fair Housing Act. And whereas the 2011 Fair Housing theme is "Live Free," which means the goal of the City Council of building a better future for families and individuals in the community. And whereas the Mason City Human Rights Commission works to promote the establishment of a safe and secure community where everyone, regardless of ethnicity, can live free from discrimination. And whereas the Mason City Council of Mason City Iowa supports the vigilance and enforcement of fair housing laws, showing no tolerance for those who discriminate and deny our citizens their basic right to housing. And now therefore, I, Eric Bookmeyer, Mayor of Mason City, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2011 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Mason City and urge citizens to support and endorse the practice and policy of fair housing and reaffirm the commitment to fair housing law. And we have Kathy Gaines here. Number three is Mason City Children's Book Week. Whereas reading is the cornerstone of education, allowing each individual to pursue knowledge. And whereas knowledge is the finest asset we give to our children and the catalyst for achieving great things in life. And whereas how well children learn to read affects how successful they are in school, as well as how well they do throughout their lives. And whereas reading to babies, toddlers, and preschoolers can have an incredible impact on their reading capacity. And whereas Children's Book Week, a celebration of the written word, will encourage young people to discover the complexity of the world beyond their own experience. And whereas Mason City Reads for preschoolers, a one-book, one-city program desires to assure that all Mason City children aged zero through five years are reading to, are read during Children's Book Week. And whereas the book, Children Make Terrible Pets by Peter Brown, has been chosen for this year's Mason City Reads for preschoolers project. Now therefore, I, Eric Bookmeyer, Mayor of Mason City, urge all citizens to join the celebration of the Mason City Reads for preschoolers program and read Children Make Terrible Pets to our youngest citizens and do hereby proclaim the week, May 2nd through the 7th, 2011, Mason City Children's Book Week. And I give Director Mark Walden. Number four is proclamation, Summer of the Geranium, Friends of the Library. Whereas beautifying Mason City is an objective in which we can all share. Whereas geraniums are hard, easy care plants that thrive in North Iowa's terrain. And whereas geraniums in many colors brighten the appearance of our homes and businesses. And whereas geraniums are readily available for purchase from local businesses and from the Mason City Friends of the Library. Now therefore, I, Eric Bookmeyer, Mayor of Mason City, do hereby proclaim the summer of 2011 to be the Summer of the Geranium. We encourage residents to plant geraniums at their homes and businesses in order to make Mason City more beautiful. And last one is proclamation for Financial Literacy Month. Whereas financial literacy is vital in assisting city residents in achieving personal financial goals by establishing and maintaining smart financial habits to improve the quality of their lives. And whereas financial literacy is essential to ensure our citizens are prepared to manage money, credit, investments, and debt. And whereas consumer education is a prerequisite for consumer protection and it increases the likelihood of financial stability by encouraging fiscal responsibility and protection. And whereas by increasing the financial literacy of all citizens, they can improve the quality of their lives, provide themselves skills for success, as well as strengthen the economy of our local area. Now therefore, I, Eric Bookmeyer, Mayor of Mason City, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Financial Literacy Month. And we have Kathy Gaines. Congratulations, thank you everybody. Alright, we're gonna move to the public forum. The Mayor and the Council will have comments for the public on agenda items only. You're asked to give your name, address, and the agenda item. And please keep your comments in five minutes and the clock is right up there in front of the podium, so.
My name is Renee Bartley and I am a member of the Mason City Earth Clean Committee. My address is 11468 Zinnian Avenue, Brockford, Iowa. I would just like to thank the city of Mason City for their continued support with the Mason City Earth Clean, Clean Up, and Festival. On behalf of all the committee members, we appreciate all the agencies, businesses, and citizens that support our effort every year. We don't have the figures yet for this year, but last year we had over 700 volunteers go out and do the Mason City cleanup and collect over 7,000 pounds of litter. Our ultimate goal is to send those volunteers out and have zero litter. Hopefully we'll get through someday through our educational efforts. Once again, I'd like to thank the city of Mason City for supporting us.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gaines.
Okay, my name is Kathy Gaines and I live at 140 14th Street Northwest. And I would like to thank the city for the putting forth the proclamation for Fair Housing Month. With this proclamation, I'm representing the Mason City Human Rights Commission and we thank you for your efforts with that together hat. I'm also the manager of Consumer Credit Counseling Service here in Mason City. And again, I want to thank the council and the city for providing us with the proclamation for Financial Literacy Month. It's very important that our citizens are able to have available to them a location that they can go to when they have financial issues and move from there, so I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines.
I'm Carolyn Brosdt, 734 North Carolina. And I represent Friends of the Library. Just a little bit about us, in case you want to join. We're about 200 strong. We're a nonprofit organization. All of our money goes to the library. We support the programs of the library, any extra speakers, anything the library needs from us that might not be in their budget. Our dues are $5, why not? And we'll accept anything above that if you so choose. We'd also decided that we would do, ask for the proclamation for geraniums for the summer, not only because of what our mayor has already stated that was in the proclamation, but because the patio is now open. And I'm sure you've all been out there today. But if you go out at all, you will see that there are some brick bid flower boxes out there. We intend to plant geraniums and some other flowers out there and hope that the citizens of Mason City will enjoy them. So we would encourage you to buy geraniums this summer, not only from Friends of the Library, which just happened to be having a sale April 30th at the mall, but also from our retailers. We have many people, not only retail stores, all of those that will be selling geraniums, lots of different colors, lots of different kinds, so buy them and enjoy.
April 30th.
Thank you. I'm Mary Markwalter, I'm the director of the library and we thank you very much for the proclamation for Children's Book Week. But most of all, we really thank you for supporting the library renovation project. It's really beautiful, we give compliments every day, all day about it, and the children's room is particularly beautiful. People who grew up here want to see it immediately and they're very pleased with how it is. We find a lot of adults spend time there who aren't escorting children too, just because it's really pretty and there's a vibrant place that will be sent home. So thanks very much for it, it's a lovely project and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mary Markwalter. Alright, all singing done, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Number six, we'll read this first and then we'll see what we need to get pulling here. Number six minutes, regular minutes of April 5th, and the work session minutes of April 12th, 2011. Seven claims dated April 7th through 14th, 2011. Eight permits. Nine, unannated financial report. Ten, mayor recommending approval of points, awards, and commissions. Eleven, administrator recommending approval, resolution, lending assessments for charges on listed properties and certification of same for county treasurer for collection. Number twelve, administrator recommending approval, resolution, award of contract B&amp;K Lawn of 2011 grass and/or wheat removal services in the city of Mason City. Number thirteen, administrator recommending approval, resolution, approving the purchase of a wheel loader from Midland Equipment of Clear Lake, Iowa, for the operation and maintenance division, street department. Number fourteen, administrator recommending approval, resolution, approving contract and bond for construction of 2011 manhole replacement and water main reroute project number 11-1001. Number fifteen, administrator recommending approval, resolution, authorized notice to bidders fixing amount of bin security and ordering clerk to publish notice fixing a date for receiving same before public hearing on plans, specifications, form of contract, estimate, or cost for construction of 2011 street panel and curb replacement program, project number 11-1002. Number sixteen, administrator recommending approval, A, resolution authorizing approval of supplemental maintenance agreement to 2080 agreement between the city and the IDOT for mowing and litter removal on Iowa 122 and US 65 as defined in the agreement. B, resolution authorizing approval of supplemental maintenance agreement to 2080 agreement between the city and IDOT for maintenance and repairs of primary roads in municipalities. Number seventeen, administrator recommending approval, resolution, approving change order number one, tank of construction company in construction of the South Delaware Avenue Bridge or Willow Creek replacement project. Number eighteen, administrator recommending approval, A, resolution authorizing preparation and submission of 21st Century Community Learning Center grant and authorizing execution of grant agreement upon application approval. B, resolution authorizing preparation and submission of National Highway Traffic Safety Administration demonstration project grant and authorizing execution of grant agreement upon application approval. C, resolution authorizing preparation and submission of a youth development grant and authorizing execution of grant agreement upon application approval. D, resolution authorizing preparation and submission of a youth mentoring grant and authorizing execution of grant agreement upon application approval. E, resolution authorizing preparation and submission of a convention through mentoring grant and authorizing execution of grant agreement upon application approval. Nineteen, administrator recommending approval, library renovation project, A, resolution approving a change order to cancel plumbing and heating. B, resolution approving a change order with blazing electric. Twenty, administrator recommending approval, flood 2008, resolution accepting warranty deed from 8246th Street Northwest. Members, are there any items you'd like to call? Mr. Weaver, from nineteen. Anybody else? Mr. Tarquess?
Thirteen.
Anybody else on there? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with exception number thirteen and nineteen.
So moved.
Second. Court call roll?
Silver.
Yes.
Marsters.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Tarquess.
Yes.
Hickey.
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. We will, we'll start with number thirteen, administrator recommending approval, resolution approving the purchase of wheel loader, Midland Equipment of Clear Lake, Iowa, for the operation and maintenance division, street department. Mr. Tarquess, do you have a motion?
I'll move to postpone.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, I appreciate the second. I'm not sure I really want to vote against it, but I wanted to share what I'm thinking on this. You know, I, really, I'm trying to be responsive to my colleagues and some of the lessons that I've learned here the last couple of months. What I've learned is, is even though it's in the budget, it's still fair game when it comes before us as a council. And I've learned that we're really not interested in investing in small business right now and creating opportunities for job growth because the economy's not conducive to that kind of investment. Instead, what I've learned is that we want to reduce taxes for the taxpayers by cutting spending. So I've been actively looking for opportunities to cut spending. It seems if that's what our strategy is, we might as well start now. And I'm not interested in cutting spending when it impacts jobs in the community, like items fourteen and fifteen, nor am I interested in cutting where it would impact the quality of life for our citizens, like infrastructure. Nor will I ever be interested in cutting personal safety equipment for our police or firefighters. So that kind of really narrows down the opportunities that we have, in my opinion, for cutting spending. And in the packet that we have before us, item number thirteen is the only one that kind of fits into that, those parameters. So I guess I'd like to hear where my colleagues are coming from this and if, and if this isn't the kind of thing where we're looking to cut spending, I guess I'm looking for what kind of items we are interested in cutting spending on.
Mr. Tarquess, just a quick clarification on motion. We have a motion close call, but we don't have an indefinite way to do a certain... Do you want to specify?
No.
Just motion, so that would be indefinite essentially. Okay.
If somebody would bring it back, I suppose.
Anybody else? I think Councilman Tarquess asked for comments from his colleagues.
Yep. Yeah, I'm fine with moving this forward. I don't see it. I know where Mr. Tarquess is at and that's probably a bigger discussion and I'm comfortable with moving this forward tonight. I'll vote to and not postpone.
Hey, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Hickey.
I'm fairly, I'm alright pretty much going on with this. I did want to ask Mr. Stangler, he and safety issues and concerns were brought up. Is there anything, I see with tree removal, snow removal, all that, that this could affect for safety issues for staff?
Well, we have an equipment replacement schedule and that equipment, replacements schedule, we do the best we can to determine which pieces of equipment need to be rolled out when. Lower 59 has really become a yard loader. It should, should go down the road, it's reached its useful life and it needs to be replaced. Certainly if, if council chooses not to replace it, we're going to continue to use it as a yard loader and we're probably going to stick a significant amount of money into it for maintaining it to keep it roadworthy if should we need to use it. So I respect whatever council chooses to do in reference to that. Obviously I would have brought it forward if I didn't think it needed to be replaced. It's the oldest loader we have.
What kind of cost could you look at as far as maintaining and fixing what currently?
Probably looking at the neighborhood of 15 to 20 to 25,000 dollars depending on where we start and where we stop. I mean, it's a piece of equipment that's that old, with the trade-in value being what it is, we can put as much money as we so desire into it and all likelihood we're not going to get any more for trade-in than what we've already received. So it's kind of like pouring metal down the drain for us.
Thank you. Yep. Thanks. Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, I support moving number 13 forward with Councilman Weaver.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Ms. Silver.
Thank you, Councilman Tarquess, for bringing this forward. And I guess my thoughts on this are is that we postponed the cemetery upgrading equipment for quite some time and, um, do we just have one of these available for the city to use? Are there more that we have? I know you say there's a rotation schedule, but I'm just curious if there's just one that we're working with, or three, or five?
We have multiple loaders, but just like today, every loader we have is scattered out to do cul-de-sacs and it's just hard to describe for you with 200 miles of streets, everything that happens with the front-end loader and all the things that we do. I mean, no, we don't have just one, we have six, 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 D. We've probably got four total in the group.
So these are used for trade-in then on new ones, or different ones?
We, every vehicle that we trade in, whether it be a truck, a backhoe, a pickup, or everything else, we give a trade-in value when we trade it in. This particular unit, I believe, if I remember my number correctly, received $27,000 off the purchase prices of trade-in.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Silver. You don't have anything, Mr. Marsters, Silver, your response?
I've heard what I needed to hear to be comfortable with moving ahead on this and so I'll tell you what I'll do is until I have a clear understanding of where we're going to cut spending, I'll continue pulling items like this and we can have discussions just like we're having now. And with that, I'll withdraw my motion.
Court draw. Is there a motion to approve number thirteen?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion on this? Seeing done, court call roll?
Marsters.
Yes.
Hickey.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Tarquess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Silver.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Number nineteen, administrator recommending approval, library renovation project, A, resolution approving a change order to cancel plumbing and heating. B, resolution approving a change order with blazing electric. Do you have a motion, Mr. Weaver?
So moved.
A and B. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, that's counseling, with all due respect to Councilman Tarquess's explanation and where he was coming from and how he handles and understands and is able to wrap his arms around an issue and understand it, that he came quite convoluted for me. Take no mistake about it, we're going to be spending over $15,000 to redo the kitchen in here. And, and what I want to say since then, what I found out is, and I have a clearer thought here, is that I talked to the fire marshal, I had a conversation with Mary Markwalter, I had a conversation with a board member from the library, and it's pretty clear to me, I would have to say that Halliburton, Halliburton Root, is it Root or Root? Root. Halliburton Root. Kind of dropped the ball on that issue there with being all that they are. I heard several things from all the different entities and I would hope that, I would hope that we'd have an understanding that everybody did a pretty good job putting this together from our side of the street, there's no question in my mind. The question that lingers is that the construction manager and whatever talks they had, which I'm sure were literally hundreds of visits, the information wasn't there on, well, it would be in the kitchen, it wasn't, there wasn't a menu at the time. And also, that kind of convoluted with what type of hood, type one or type two. So I've got a pretty good clarification of where we're headed and I just wanted to make sure that I was clear who, who I feel the responsibility lays with, and that would have been the architects.
Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Okay. Anybody else? Alright. Seeing done, call roll?
Weaver.
Yes.
Marsters.
Yes.
Silver.
Yes.
Tarquess.
Yes.
Hickey.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Alright, thank you, Council. Motion carries. Number twenty-one, it's public hearing, administrator recommending approval, resolution authorizing application for state transit assistance funds and federal funds in unauthorized areas for financial assistance and commitment of city funds for Mason City transit system. Now is the time for the public hearing. Got a promise you'd like to make regarding the item? Please come to the podium and state your name and address and you'll have five minutes. Alright, seeing done, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to second the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Marsters.
Okay.
Mr. Nelson.
Okay.
Anybody else? Alright, seeing done, court call roll?
Marsters.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Tarquess.
Yes.
Silver.
Yes.
Hickey.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Alright, thank you, Council. Number twenty-two, administrator recommending approval, presentation, the CDVG Disaster Recovery Sanitary Sewer Repair Project. We're going to have Bill Stangler introduce this and this is a large project, I believe it's around $5 million, and it's going to be kind of some public education and also for council, so. Mr. Stangler, do you want to introduce Mr. Stangler?
Yeah, tonight I have Al Ingram with me and I have been working on this presentation for quite an extensive period of time. The whole INI study has basically come into a culmination of five years' worth of work. This will identify where the city is today and where we need to go in the future. This probably is one of the largest sanitary sewer projects that the city of Mason City has ever undertaken, so I'm grateful for the government to give us a grant and grateful to the council for coming up with the match, so it's working in our favor. With that, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. I think we'll pause just for a second while we get the projector turned on here.
The other one. Let me have it. Is that a type one or type two? Come on. Come on, Joe. This is live TV, folks. Anybody else?
Nothing else, it's the way we're in, paper copies.
This is the right one.
I got that. Alright, as, as Mr. Stangler said, this is going to be one of the largest projects the city's ever completed in your sewer collection system. We're going to take a little bit of time tonight and we have a couple, you know, we actually have a couple new council members and embarrassed since we started this, so we're going to take a little bit of time just to talk about, tell you how we got to this point, how we got this tremendous grant, so. I think it's a little left, but there we go. Alright, so I want to talk about INI investigation. Remember INI is info and infiltration for clear water that's getting into the sanitary sewer. Five phases to that that was started in 2005. We're talking about repairs completed to date, prioritization of remaining repairs, and also what this proposed project is all about. So, a little bit of background, seems like we've had 100-year floods about every three or four years, but in 2004 we had severe flooding in town and that was the beginning of this project. So back then, the council initiated a five-year program. And at that time, staff in the council set five goals. First one was avoid future sanitary sewer backups, because as everyone knows sewage in your basement is absolutely no fun, in addition to being, you know, unsanitary and just overall problematic. Second one was, we did not have a very good inventory of our assets, basically, our manholes, our pipes. And that was another goal, this was to be able to do that and incorporate that into, into a more readily accessible format. And what we settled on ultimately was a GIS-based system. Third, prioritize repairs, reduce the INI, and then... And then the last one there along with service life and investment at that time was just the beginning of the planning stages for the wastewater treatment plant expansion, which ultimately, you know, all thirteen million dollars were put into that project. And we didn't want to shorten the life of that because we had extra flows getting to that. So we really wanted to protect that, you know, at that time, forthcoming plant expansion. So those were the goals we set about six years ago. Okay, divided the city up into five parts. And many of you remember this. We had Meadowbrook, North Hampshire, it was phase one. We proceeded to cement plant, Jefferson School area. Third phase was downtown, South Central. Then lastly, West Willow Creek and Asbury Park, which we're actually finishing up right now. And actually, golden at phase five, I'm sorry, phase five. You can learn a little bit more about that in the next couple of months. And basically, we did one area per year. What did we do in each of those years? Well, we did primarily five things. Manual inspections, full circuit televising of all the mains. Again, we wanted to develop that asset inventory. We smoke tested everything, smoke testing to look for cross connections. Di-tested, find out where the sewer was going. And lastly, we did small amounts of salt pump inspections in each area. We did two-hundred-and-fifty inspections in each of those five areas. Manual inspections, we developed a database, which is seen in the lower left. And then ultimately, that was entered into a GIS, into your GIS. So that's an actual output map from your existing GIS with all of your manholes rated by defect and by asset. So you have more than forty different assets for each manhole that are rated and are now electronically archived in your GIS system. So a great tool for both maintenance and repair in the future. Same thing was done with your sanitary sewer pipes. They were also televised. Pipe Tech is the software that you've purchased and that is now incorporated again into your GIS system. So city staff can pull up any line in the city, view the video of that, and then also do things such as rate pipes by size, condition, roots, cracks, et cetera, et cetera. So again, very valuable tool. Smoke and di-testing, that's an actual picture there of where we had, we blow smoke into the sanitary sewer and see if it comes out anywhere it isn't supposed to. This is a storm sewer catch basin. You're not supposed to have smoke coming out of there. And we had seventeen areas in the downtown area in phase three. That's what this low right-hand map is. That's basically, we call it, it's smoked. So the two thousand and nine grant repair project, we took care of those seventeen areas. And then we're going to take care of the remainder of them in this project. Summary, seven-hundred-thousand, a little over feet of sewer in the city, almost twenty-nine-hundred manholes. And we've identified almost twenty million dollars worth of repairs. Now, that phase five was preliminary. So I don't want everybody to get scared. That's a big number. But we've been, the city's been very proactive in chipping away at this here over the last couple of years. So what have you done? The map in the low right shows what you've done. So you've completed water main reroutings, manual lining, sewer pipe repairs, lining, salt pumps, et cetera. Many areas throughout the city. So you've done a lot, but obviously, there's still quite a bit left to do. So what specifically have we completed? So in two thousand and nine, we received basically a fifty-fifty match for a bottom-million-dollar project. In addition to that, about two-point-five million other repairs have been completed by the city. So that nineteen million dollars, we've taken off, almost three-point-five million off of that project. So this next project here is about a five-million-dollar project. So the city received basically a four-point-five-million-dollar grant. You have a five-hundred-thousand-dollar match to that. And this was based on two thousand and eight floods. And really, by being proactive back in two thousand and four, enabled you to get this grant. If you had not completed, I'm sorry, my opinion. My opinion is if you had not completed that, those phases one through four, you would not have got this grant because you would not have had the information available to submit for it. So again, being proactive in two thousand and four has resulted in a, basically a four-point-five-million-dollar grant. That application was based on three-thousand feet of pipe replacement, sixty-nine point repairs, and sixty-six thousand linear feet of lining. And that last number down there, the bottom is a little bit cut off, is a hundred-and-seventy manholes. And again, we would not have known those numbers in those repairs without doing that inventory ahead of time. Okay, so if we have nineteen million dollars worth of repairs, we've completed three-point-five, roughly sixteen million left, we have five million to spend, what are we going to spend it on? We have lots of pipes, lots of manholes. So what we worked with city staff is we went through a risk analysis basically to help quantify and prioritize what we're going to do. Ultimately, make a selection. So we're going to take a little bit of time to kind of run through that because this is something that your staff spent a lot of time on that they was going to really serve you well in the future. So risk of failure. So what we did is we developed a system where you have a consequence of failure, which we had weight at sixty percent, and a likelihood of failure, which you weighed at forty percent. You add those two together and you get a total score. We'll talk a little bit about how we get likelihood of consequence. And ultimately, you add those together and you have a score of a maximum of five. We color those red over in the corner. And then based on that, you can now prioritize your pipes and repairs and really helps you manage your data more effectively. Okay, likelihood of failure, what does that mean? So inside that likelihood of failure, we have a severity rating. So this is based on that televising. Every line in the city was televised, was receiving rated from one through five. The sewer system was also modeled to determine capacity issues. So if the pipe was less than a hundred percent, it would be a three rating. And then whether or not we were able to complete the full circuit televising. There are some areas that we were not able to complete because maybe the sewer was in the river or along the river. We just couldn't get access to it. So as an example, if we had a pipe that had a severity rating of five, was less than one-hundred percent capacity, and we completed the CCTV, its overall rating would, or likelihood of failure would be three-point-two. So five times point four is two. Three times point three is point nine. And one times point three is point three. Add that together, three-point-two. So that was done for every single pipe within the city of Mason City and a little bit similar analysis for every single manhole within the city. In addition to that, then, not only is there likelihood, there's a consequence of failure. If we have a pipe that has a three-point-two rating and it's next to Mercy Hospital or downstream, it's a lot different than if it's out in the field. So what we did is we developed, again, a consequence and we basically rated or prorated everything. So if we had basement backups in the past, that was a twenty percent of the overall consequence score. INI potential was thirty percent. So near a river, it'd give you a higher score. Or if we have a lot of sanitary sewer pipes actually located underneath your storm sewer. So again, that would give it a higher score. Emergency repair, if something did break, how hard is it to repair? Also, service area, the bigger the pipe, the more sewage is in it. So the bigger the pipe, the bigger the consequence. Kind of straightforward there. Major user, if there's a major user within one-thousand feet of that pipe, they receive the higher score. So the bigger industries, again, Mercy Hospital, those types of industries where if you flood them out, there's a bigger consequence flooding out of hospital than there is, you know, field. And then lastly, transportation. How do we get to that? Again, so for example, if the pipe is underneath the highway or railroad, it's a higher consequence of failure than in the field. Okay, so this might be a little harder to read, might be a little easier to read in your handout. So again, every single pipe now has a risk of failure analysis and you've color-coded it, and that's what this map depicts. And it's a little hard to see, but in essence, a lot of the red lines are major lines along rivers. And if you look downstream of truck sewers, et cetera, a lot of the older areas. So again, this is really a graphical way to help prioritize your risk and also ultimately help prioritize your repairs. Again, when you have this many repairs, something like this just becomes essential. Okay, so what does this project include? So this project, we're doing pipe repairs, pipe replacement, line, manhole re-able replacement, water main reroute. So what does that mean? I'm sorry, jumping ahead of myself. Prioritize. So priorities were pipes with inflow infiltration, again, the likelihood of failure, risk. And then lastly, manholes. Because we have a lot of manholes that need repair, the manholes are going to kind of tag along with the pipes. If the pipe's getting fixed, then we're going to do that manhole. We're not going to go out and do manholes that are associated with pipes because we have more manholes to fix than we have money in this project. Okay, now, what does this mean? This right here is when, this is a full circuit televising. When we run the camera down, this is what we saw on one spot. This is not good. That's a pipe that has a number of holes connected to it. That's a crushed pipe. So that right there is a pipe repair. What that means is we're going to dig that up and replace that pipe. So here's an actual pipe repair from nineteen, I'm sorry, two thousand and nine. So that was a crushed pipe. And you can see that white area in the middle, that's where we replaced it. So this will happen to be, I believe, about an eight-foot section of pipe. So you dig it up, put a new piece in, put a repair sleeve on, and then that basic obstruction is gone. Next thing, pipe replacement. Pretty solid explanation. These are actual, again, actual pictures of your pipes. So these are pipes that are beyond repair via lining or some other. This pipe, just you have to dig it up. You can see it's deformed, caving in, in poor condition. Okay, lining. Linings are something where we still have structural integrity, where you don't see the pipes pieces falling in. But what we have are roots, big root walls coming in. This right here is what we call a gusher root, it's water squirting in the side. And over here, we have some more roots. So we have things like that, structural integrity still there. We bring in a cure-to-place liner, we line that pipe. Basically, restores integrity of it. This is what, this is again, one of your actual lines. This is a pipe afterwards, after we're done. So this is a seamless pipe pulled all the way from manhole to manhole, seals all the joints, gets all those roots out, and actually even restores some of the structural integrity.
Is that, is that a skunk in there?
What that is, that's actually a jetter. We have a jetter head that goes in front of the camera. So what you're actually seeing there, that's a metal jetter head spraying water out, cleaning this as we go so we get a better TV picture. Okay, manholes. Here's one of your manholes here looking in from the top. We have poor bench, we have poor walls. This is after you line it, this is what it looks like. So again, this is what we'll be doing. We'll be spray lining the manholes to basically help not only keep them from leaking, but also help to restore structural integrity. For you council members that sat through all these fun presentations in the past, you might remember this picture. This was a leak we found here, Bill helped me out, two years ago?
Yeah, two years ago.
This was a leak that was leaking seventy-five gallons a minute. Now, not all of them are that big, actually hardly any of them are that big. They're much smaller. But this is what Bill and I call the trophy leak. You know, when you hang on the wall and you find it. Because this is a lot of water getting into your sewer. Actually, we had a water main break nearby that was unnoticed. That did not appear yet. And it did not appear because we had a poor chimney condition in this manhole and the water just ran right into it. This manhole wouldn't have been in such poor condition, this leak would have surfaced somewhere else and would have been fixed quicker. So when we do something like this, what we do is we redo the chimney. So that's the yellow part there. So again, we'll be doing that when we have poor chimney conditions. We'll be fixing those as well as the casting. They're basically the lid part of the manhole that you drive over. And then lastly, water main reroutes. This is an actual picture. That's a water main going through your sanitary sewer. That's something that the city's been very diligent on working on over the last, I believe, five, ten years. And we're really chipping away to, we've got actually quite a bit of these already taken care of, but we still have some left. This is not a priority of this project, but it is something that the manholes in poor condition will reroute these water tanks. Okay, so with all that, where are all these repairs at? There is, here, basically a map showing that. So red is lining, and then the different blues are replacement and pipe repairs. So basically, you know, a lot of them are on the major lines. But you see a lot of your diaphragms are scattered throughout town. So this summer, when this construction project is taking place, there's going to be contractors working all over the place. So it'll take a lot of coordination and there'll be some challenges involved, traffic control, dust, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, timeline. So presentation to council, that's tonight. This will be back on your agenda on May third. And what you'll be doing there is you'll be entertaining a resolution that will set the hearing and letting date. And what we're looking at is a big letting date of June first and back to the council for the actual public hearing and award on June seventh. Tentative will be in construction in July. And lastly, complete construction, that number over there is May fourth. The grant expiration is ahead of May of two thousand and twelve. So I wish this would be the first part of May of two thousand and twelve.
Okay. Hey, thank you very much, Mr. Shangler. We'll do a round of questions here while we have you. There is an action required on Saturday this time. Please.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Hickey? My main question is if we start this June first and start the work on, I mean, June seventh to May fourth, does that give us enough time to get all this work completed?
Yes, we believe it does. Though it will take a contractor with multiple crews. This will not be a long-crew job. We've been talking to contractors and particularly our local contractors here. We believe this is, this timeline is reasonable.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. What was down there?
Mr. Tornquist? When we finish this contract here, this basic construction, what percent complete will we be against the total twenty-million-dollar defects that we've identified?
It'll be about forty percent complete. And the key thing with that is really our highest rated defects, we'll have most of those taken care of, we'll have all the five repairs done and a good chunk of the fours will be completed.
Anyone else? For a response? Mr. Hickey, response?
I said just good work to staff and good work to the previous councils for getting us where we're at to this point.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Shangler.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, number twenty-three, Administrator Recommending Approval Orders Amendment Title II Boards and Commissions, Chapter Twelve Historic Preservation Commission, Section Two Organization Paragraph C in its entirety and new Paragraph C. And I believe this is on second. Is there a motion on second?
Come on.
Is there a second? All right, is there a discussion on this? Seeing none, quick call roll.
Marsters?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Tornquist?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Includes our order of business. We're adjourned. We'll be posted in about five minutes.